Twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one to order. And Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, here in Cadillac. Alabas.
You're on mute.
Thank you. President Cadillac.
Ingalls.
Here in Cadillac.
King.
Present and attending in.
Mayor Fulkens.
Here, City of Cadillac. All right, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda for this afternoon.
This is councilmember Shippers. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support. This is Ingalls.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Sorry, need to turn off a beeper. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you are going to speak, that you state your name, and then also keep your comments to three minutes or less.
If anyone's attending remotely via phone, you can hit star nine, and that will signify that you'd like to raise your hand to make a comment. I see Marcus has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. On behalf of a resident of the city by the name of Shannon Gilmore, who is handicapped, she had requested a reader comment on her behalf into the public record, and it is as follows. My thoughts on the bike path. I'd rather it be a pedestrian path rather than a bike path. I'm visually impaired, and I have been hit by bikes before and left on the pathway. I am very nervous about mixing bikes with pedestrians as I don't want to get hit again. I walk from the corner of South and Lake Streets to Family Fair Grocery to shop and to the library and after twenty-six for a cup of coffee. I use the entire corner as my route, walking west to east and back again. Suggestions: Turn four-way stop into a safer crosswalk. Cars just roll through without stopping. They don't check to the left and right when turning. One time, a car was so close, I could actually see the car, and that's close as I can see two feet in front of where I am walking. Also, the sidewalks need to be fixed. Keep the bikers that use the road on the road where they must obey traffic laws. Shannon Gilmore. That concludes the comments. Oh, P.S. Bikes sign must walk bikes at crosswalk. And that concludes the comments received that I was asked to read into the record.
Thank you, Marcus.
Anyone else would like to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. You can indicate so by hitting star nine if you're attending via cellphone or regular phone. All right, we've got Mark Lagerway. I'm allowing you to unmute yourself. You can go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for having this hearing today. And I'm not going to speak long because I spoke everything I had to say last time, and I think you've all seen it. But I just want to say that I'm happy and I'm hopeful that the council is to the juncture where you will be moving forward with this project. As a Cadillac Rotarian, we support these types of projects, as you know, throughout our community, natural resource, outdoor recreation. We've worked with the Cadillac Pathway, we've got the White Pine Ride, and we also had our auction four years ago that raised thirty-three thousand dollars toward this project. And we like to think that that money went a long way toward helping with the match that was required to get the DNR Trust Fund grant. Those grants require at least a twenty-six percent match, and I think this grant might have achieved thirty percent. So that's a really thing that we're proud of, and we're really happy to see this project move forward. You have three options. I think all three of them are acceptable, and I hope that you have a good conversation about which one. My personal feeling is that, one, we should use all the grant dollars that you have, and when we go behind the library, you would not be able to use all those grant dollars because part of the reason the grant was awarded was because of the view of the water, and it received more points because of that. I also am not in favor of putting the pathway on the road. However, it certainly is a feasible possibility. So, all things considered, I'm mainly just happy and hopeful that you're going to get this done. It's been a long wait. We're excited to have this. It's a great resource for our community. And all three options are certainly viable. I think the best option is the one that goes in front of the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, we've got Kay Smith, eighty-one. If you'd like to unmute yourself and go ahead.
Am I unmuted? I think I am.
Yep, we can hear you.
Kelly Smith, Baker College president. We have a building downtown. I would just like to concur with what Mark had said. It's time to move this along. I think postponing it only irritates those of us in the Rotary who have worked towards this and waited for it to happen, but I also think kicking the can down any further only adds to the costs. I think we're all aware that costs are not getting cheaper, they're getting much more expensive. So my hope is that there is some plan that's presented today that is selected by this council, and we start to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Gerald Dear, I see you also have your hand raised. If you'd like to go ahead and unmute yourself and speak now.
There.
You went out really quick. There you go.
Am I there?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, council. Glad to be back in Cadillac after being south. Nice to see snow melted. Thank you for looking into the bike path and working on this all this time. We, as citizens, we'd like to see things improve in Cadillac, and it's nice to see things moving forward. So we'd like to encourage you to keep up your good work and get the bike path done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Rob Munger, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute yourself, you can speak right now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I agree with Mark and Kelly and Jerry there. I'd like to see the project move forward, and I definitely agree with Mark that it would be beneficial to have the bike path go in front of the library instead of behind the library because it does help the aesthetics of a bike rider. And there's been a lot of positive media about Cadillac, and I just keep encouraging the leadership to keep going, and I appreciate everything the leadership's doing for Cadillac because I know you're going above and beyond to make a positive difference in people's lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised currently, but if you'd like to make a public comment at this time.
Ruth Ann.
I think that was Rob. I'm not seeing a hand currently raised.
She's just waving. Go ahead, Ruth Ann.
I don't know how you do with the hand thing.
That's okay. Go ahead right now.
Okay, thank you. My comments. Ruth Ann French, basically, you know, having been a former bike rider, I understand the challenges of getting around Lake Cadillac on the Lake Street portion of the bike ride around the lake. And I appreciate the fact that we're trying to tie that trailhead into the White Pine Trail. My main concern now is also a visually impaired person who no longer rides a bike but sometimes tries to navigate that downtown area is when you have a mixed-use pedestrian and bike interface. It's kind of, safety has to be the primary issue. And whichever one, two, or three plan you go ahead with, I just want to encourage you to use overuse signage and painting so that pedestrians have right of way even with bikes. Part of the issue here, especially the corner of Lake Street and South that Shannon alluded to, is you've got all those people in Harborview who use that south portion of the crosswalk. And so, more predominantly, my suggestion would be if you were to route bikes on the north portion of the crosswalk across Lake Street at that corner of South and Lake, then at least, and then give the pedestrians the south crossing. It would give maybe a little separation between the two as you try and tie it into the trail behind Harborview then. And again, signage for cars to acknowledge bikes as well as pedestrians at that intersection in particular, as well as, yeah, I mean, maybe even walking their bikes across.
Walk your bikes.
Would be helpful. Anyway, my main comment is in regards to safety when you're doing a mixed-use section of the trail. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Don't miss anything, Shannon.
It's up to you.
Okay. I am.
Okay, Karen.
Hi, yeah. I'm just going to add to what Shannon and Ruth Ann said. As friend and family of vision impaired folks and the hundred and forty people that live at Harborview, I'm not sure if their input was asked about this project because they need to use that intersection. It's not a want, it's a need. They walk, actually, they walk east to west or west to east and cross both streets to get to the grocery store. And so, safety is a huge concern as far as option one, two, or three. Yeah, the big, I see the big problem is being the South Street and the Lake Street intersection. It's already dangerous and busy for folks that are walking, and then to add bikes into that, I'm not sure how you can safely do that. I mean, I think it needs some more thought, that intersection in particular, to keep it safe for the walkers. Thank you.
Okay. Sandy, that was Karen Anderson that was just speaking.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, Lori King. I see your hands raised.
Thank you. Lori King from the City of Cadillac. I also bike a lot, but I live on Holly Road, and I also walk a lot on the sidewalks that we're talking about here. And my thought is, really, what Ruth Ann said is there's a major concern because there are a lot of people that walk along that sidewalk to the library. And if we try to introduce pedestrians and bikers on that sidewalk, we're going to run into problems. And in addition, you also have people coming in and out of the library parking lot. It's already a little hazardous to walk along there, frankly. I can't imagine adding bikers to that sidewalk. My suggestion would be, again, I'm absolutely for the project. My suggestion would be that we run it behind the library. I think it's the safer, and it's the least interaction between bikers and walkers but for the crossing of South Street, which is going to have to happen regardless because of the location of the path. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Hello? I think I'm unmuted. As with Lori King, I also live on Holly Road. I bike and walk that path a lot. I'm aware of the South Street-Lake Street intersection being one of the busiest intersections for pedestrians, bikes, and cars. I also know that that section of Lake Street was redone. It used to be a terrible section to ride a bike on, then it was redone. We've got pretty close to the equivalent of three feet of bike lane on either side of Lake Street. You just can't tell because nobody maintains it. I was in several cities where they've got good bike lanes marked nicely, good paint, markings with green showing a biker on it. It's almost an ideal section to show a bike lane. And I was thinking that the entire segment, all the way to even Pine Street, could be, you know, model bike lane, well-marked, signed, and coming from both directions. People ride around the lake all the time. They're on those bike lanes all the time. I doubt they're going to bother to cut over to get on a lane that's going to be either in front of the library or behind the library. They're going to stay on the lake. It's just the way it is. I don't think there's much scenic value in going behind the library. You're looking at the back of Family Fair and some dumpsters, and then it just sort of drops you off at the intersection or at the parking lot for the Midas muffler. Not a good location. And then, we do have a perfectly functional sidewalk there that is heavily walked on, people use it. And I don't have a problem keeping the bikes in the street because we're in the street all the way around the lake. It's not a problem if you're in, probably more people ride around the lake than ride on the White Pine Trail. So, it was my idea, you know, to keep it in the street and to turn it into like model bike lane.
He said his name, didn't he?
We concur.
So, but.
Did you unmute this?
Yeah, you too.
Okay, now we concur with that.
Tom, I'm sorry.
And that's my, and that's what I say.
Okay, everyone, unless you are the one that has been asked to speak, you can't just interject into the meeting again, okay? Tom, were you finished?
Yes, I have no more to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment at this time?
Doreen Link has her hand raised.
I don't know where that little hand raise thing is. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is Doreen Lance, and I have been volunteer shopping for the people at Harborview since COVID. So I am down there probably three times a week shopping at Family Fair Forum. But the ones that can get out and shop, you know, I'm seeing them going back and forth to either the Family Dollar or whatever that is there, and then the grocery store. And it is a very busy corner, and I would hate for one of those people to get hurt. So, you know, I just wanted, I don't know what the answer is. I'm not a biker. I just want it to be the safest for the people that are going to the library and the people that are crossing that street because I see it numerous times a day, how many people are traveling that sidewalk. And if anybody wants to volunteer, let me know.
Thank you, Doreen.
Anyone else? Would you like to make a public comment at this time? You can go ahead and raise your hand or hit star nine if you are attending by phone.
I don't see anyone else, Leslie.
I don't, and I don't see anything. I've checked the chat as well just to make sure anybody's contacted me wanting to speak, so I think we're all set.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. In this afternoon, we have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Could someone entertain the motion?
This is councilmember Shippers. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens.
Yes. Motion carries. And with that, we'll turn the next segment over to Marcus for introduction to our discussion on the White Pine Trail project.
Thank you, and good afternoon, mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity today to present options for your consideration regarding the future of our trailhead at Cadillac Commons Project. As everyone may recall, when we met in the later part of two thousand and twenty, we reviewed the project and the bid that they came in that was significantly higher than we had anticipated. And the result of that meeting was basically a redirect to staff to present alternative options that would be not just more economical, but also options showing how we could have the path extension component relocated to a different area aside from being directly adjacent to Lake Cadillac along the west side of Lake Street. I am happy to advise that three options were developed. One with the path located within the Lake Street right-of-way along the east side of the street, one with the path located off of the street generally in the area in front of the library on the east side of Lake Street, and one located behind the library in between the building and the railroad right-of-way. The three options also include a pared-down scope. Essentially, it helped reduce some possible trailhead component itself while still being compliant with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant that we received. Important to note, you know, pursuant to council's direction last year, we did meet virtually with the Lansing-based Michigan Department of Natural Resources Grant Administrator as well as our area DNR representative to discuss the project. We were advised by our area DNR rep that he was not aware of any additional DNR funding available and that outside funding related to pathwork or routing, if the path were to be behind the library, is also something that he was currently unaware of any additional availability. The reason why we asked those questions was because previously and in prior communications, at least with one of the members of city council, it was mentioned that there may have been at some point some additional funds available. Our MDNR Grant Administrator also has subsequently advised that her office would be able to accept the relocation of the path and that the grant would still be able to cover its costs should it be located in the option behind the library or if we chose the option in front of the library. If the street option is selected, approximately forty-six thousand dollars of the grant dollars that are currently identified to pay for that component of the project would be lost unless we otherwise reallocated those dollars to the trailhead. So hypothetically, if we were to build in some additional costs that we've already removed, costs that were approved by the DNR currently, we could then basically take those grant dollars if that in the right-of-way, in the street right-of-way option is picked, take those grant dollars, reallocate them, and therefore not lose them. And obviously, the same rules apply. It's a seventy-thirty percentage split. Additionally, as a part of the public packet of information that was sent to our media, posted on our website, shared via a link on our Facebook site, we published a questions and clarification sheet to try to highlight some of the questions that came to us. The sheet correlates to information directly in the slide presentation that everyone will hear about from Connie, our engineer, very momentarily, very shortly. And it addresses essentially three primary questions. One, request for a specific list of items that are being bid for the trailhead component. If you look at the packet that was posted on our website, that's currently found on page twenty-three. The second question was regarding the trail extension options and the trail adjacent to the rail. You know, what is the cost of that pathway turning southwest to the corner versus going straight across Chapin Street? That could be found on page twenty. And also, do the numbers for the option behind the library include funds previously discussed from the DNR or a private donor? And again, that would be found on page twenty-four. I really appreciate everyone's time and patience and desire to really create an awesome project that could really be enjoyed by, you know, folks across the entire community, whether you're a bicyclist or not. I would like to ask Connie, our engineer, basically, to be ready here in a second to present the slides that explain the three options. Following Connie's presentation, it'd absolutely be appropriate for council to discuss and, of course, make a motion to move one of the options forward. Once we have that, staff will basically prepare it for bidding and come back as soon as possible, likely, I'm thinking, it'll probably be June, July, for you to then consider the results of the bidding and see if we can get something at least started with construction yet this year or not finished. So, thank you, and Connie, if you're ready to go, I would say the floor is yours. Just need to share your screen.
All right. Do I have permission, Leslie, to share?
Yep, Connie, you should have permission. Just let me know if you have any problems.
Okay. Is that showing?
Not yet.
Hey, Connie, it's really hard to hear you. You might need to move closer to the mic or shout.
All right. Let me... Okay, share screen.
And then you pick which screen you need to share.
Here.
There you go.
All right, let's make this big. All right, is that a full screen for everyone? Okay, all right. All right, so as Marcus said, we're going to go through the three options and just kind of, a lot of this, or all of this was in the packet, and then questions and just in your discussion afterwards. All right, there's the invite to the meeting. So we have three trail extension options that we reviewed after the last meeting, the public meeting we had at the market, and we color-coded these so just for the ease of people being able to follow which option we're talking about. The green one is the bike lanes on the shoulder of Lake Street, and we'll explain how that's painted. And then there's a red magenta option. That is the ten-foot path in front of the library. That is a separated trail. And then there's going to be a blue option, cyan, ten-foot path behind the library, and that's on the historic railroad grade. So if you can see this here, we have green paint, as Mr. Smith had mentioned. You know, that is the standard, let me move this here. All right, so that's the nationally recognized delineation for bike paths. So using that, you use it right before intersections so that people know to continue on before and after the intersection so they know where to continue going with their bikes. Very visible color. And we also add additional painting of bike symbols on the pavement so that it's very clear that that's a bike lane. And the nice thing is, is we can do this on the existing shoulders. As was mentioned, Lake Street was built, and it does have that wide area that we can have the bike path continue on. And once you get past the trailhead, that is where the bike lane is already as well. So it's a consistent trail location after the trailhead. So the nice thing about this option is it does maximize your exposure to Lake Cadillac, which we all love. You do have a visibility of the trailhead destination as you're in those bike lanes heading towards the trailhead. It does happen to be the shortest distance to the trailhead. The green paint enhances the in-street trail, and that could be used no matter which off-street option is chosen as well. As was mentioned, some people will continue to ride in those bike lanes. And there is a higher visibility of trail users. And as many people mentioned, then you're not combining the pedestrians with the bicyclist. All right, so here's another option. This is a separated trail along Lake Street. You can see the pinkish-red along there. So that is in the place in front of the library that is where the sidewalk is right now. So that sidewalk would be replaced with a ten-foot wide path. This option is fundable by the DNR grant. It does continue with a consistent trail width as everyone that is on the White Pine Trail is used to as they're coming down the hill towards the South Lake Street intersection. So again, you have the visibility of the trailhead destination as you're on that path, so users know. So users know exactly where they're going to to the trailhead. And you do have the aesthetics of Lake Cadillac from this path also. And another nice thing that is with both of these first two options is you do have the street lighting. So there is some ambient lighting there if you're out there at dusk. All right, and this is the rail trail option. So this takes the historical location of the railroad. So as you come off of the trail on the opposite corner of South Street and Lake Street, you do have to cross one way or another across that intersection and then it jumps on the old railroad bed. And it follows along, as everyone mentioned, behind Family Fair. And then it continues on behind the library. And you'll go past the rain garden that's there and it sneaks in right beside the railroad. And then we, there are two things involved with this with the railroad. We have had preliminary meetings with the railroad to make sure that what our needs would be back there. And we do need to put in a little chain fence along there because we don't want users of the path to be crossing the railroad illegally. And we also need to just ditch back there to make sure that we're not adding any water to the railroad. And at the end here, it comes back in along the library and comes to the corner of Chapin Street and Lake Street so that you can enter the trailhead parking lot through the grand entrance of it. We had discussed if it could cross across along the railroad. And you get into conflict points with traffic leaving the trailhead vehicles. And you know, we have to have additional curb cut along there. So that you do get a beautiful view of the lake as you come along if you're heading back to the west towards the lake. And another nice option about this route is you are separated from traffic. There are no driveway conflicts back there as there are in front of the library. So those are some benefits to that one. So we put together estimates, engineering estimates based on where we believe the contractors would bid these three alternatives. And move my thing here so I can see again. So these are, as Marcus said, in the packet as well, but we have estimates, the bike lanes on the Lake Street section, the green option. It's about, we're estimating it to be about $46,000 to do the mobilization and the pavement marking. And we do have to improve the ADA ramps at the intersection. We do that with all three options. And additional signing, as was mentioned. And then the red option in front of the library, that path option of the 10-foot separated trail along Lake Street. That one also has, we'd remove the old sidewalk, we'd put in the asphalt path. We do have to do the ADA ramps, which this one, you have to do a little bit more of the ADA ramps with that option. And then on the rail option, that ends up being about $101,000 for the path behind the library. Okay, so we have to go in there and we have to get rid of all the trees and the do some shrub clearing and everything back there and build the grade up to put the path through there. As I mentioned, there is a line item for fencing back there. We have to do the chain link fencing and the ADA ramps and put the path in. This one is a little bit longer, so that's why the path option is a little bit more expensive. All right. So those are the three path options. And then we have the trailhead, as was mentioned at the meeting back in October. You know, we had other items in the bid item that were asked to be removed from this and go back to the bare bones, which we have done. We have gotten rid of the decorative lighting that was throughout the whole trailhead. We do have two decorative lights along the street side. So it will look similar to the poles that are in the plaza and the market so that, you know, some flower pots could be hung or the banners, just so that it's a consistent branding of the trailhead parking lot. But the back parking lot lights will be just commercial lights, so the parking lot area is well lit. We did remove the whole reconstruction of the parking lot and it's now going to be rehabbed. So it's going to be a mill and overlay for part and only the little bit that needs to be reconstructed for drainage will be reconstructed. And then we have left in the additional parking along Chapin Street because many people in the city would like more parking, so we have those extra spots there. This corner here of Chapin and Lake Street, that is where the clock tower was incorporated into this. So the clock tower that was moved from the Lofts project. And that will be put on pillars so that everyone will ride underneath that. We do have still in the budget, just a small arch similar to the one that is put on top of the market. So with the branding and everything of all of the Cadillac Commons pieces, that's still there, but it was made a smaller arch than what we had originally planned. We removed the concrete plaza area that was in the middle of the trailhead and we now just have connecting sidewalks. So people will pull into the parking lot. You can get your bikes off your bike racks and get them up the ramp and everybody can get to the trail easily. We have the ADA crossing over to the bathrooms that's usable. We already have water on site, so that is where the drinking fountain will go. With the grant, we do have to put in the kiosk with the maps, so that is left in there. We did take out the picnic shelter. So the picnic tables will now be in the open area. The grant application had ADA accessible picnic tables. We don't have any ADA accessible picnic tables in the city of Cadillac. So those could be located here so that users can enjoy a picnic lunch as well. And then bike racks are still there, the bike repair station. Those were also things that people have offered to donate to the project. And then we have the benches that are required in the grant and we also have garbage containers, you know, for the recycling, you know, if people have plastic bottles to throw away, things like that. So this was, those are the items that are remaining in the trailhead location. All right. And then this next view, we included that in color just so it'd be easier to see the grassed area versus the parking lot area. And the ADA ramps are all in blue, so you can see how accessible it is for users of all needs. All right. So with that, we put together our revised project cost estimate for the trailhead lot. And so the previous bids we received in September for the trailhead itself was $478,950. So in this list here, we have removed all those items that I mentioned and we have the basic amenities that were included in the grant application. We do also have a rain garden that's on both sides of the trailhead entrance. And that was important in our verbiage for the grant application and for cleaning out the water. We want to get the water to go through the rain garden and through the plants and filter so that we're not depositing sediment and you know, oil from cars and things like that into Lake Cadillac. So we want to clean that out. So that's why we have a rain garden there. There is an irrigation system. Like I mentioned, there is water already in that area. And I think I mentioned everything else that's listed here in that. So that then cut the trailhead portion of this project from $478,950. We estimate that it will come in at $324,000. Okay? As I mentioned, we did remove the picnic shelter and that could be an optional item that could be added later at a later date. And then we also removed the bike storage lockers. We do have bike racks there. There are just no enclosed storage lockers that were in the original grant application. And then there is $20,000 that is still a line item and that's the pipe across the street to the west going into the lake that does need some maintenance on. So it would be nice to have the contractor fix it in this project because we're already paying for the mobilization for them to come. So that would be a cheaper price than bidding that out separately. So just to recap everything, and this is color coded again, so we can talk about the green option on the street shoulders, the red option, the separated trail on Lake Street in front of the library, and the blue option, which is the option of the rail trail behind the library. So the previous bid received with the trail extension and the trailhead was $549,750. That's where we were last September, okay, before these revisions were made. So if we did the street shoulder, as I mentioned before, it's $46,000 plus the trailhead cost. So we're at $370,000. So as Marcus mentioned early on, that option for the street shoulder paint is not eligible under the grant reimbursement. Okay, so that would be not allowed. So if we wanted to maximize using the grant dollars that DNR has offered the city, we could choose to add some amenities to the trailhead if we wanted to maximize those grant dollars. All right. The option along Lake Street of the separated trail in front of the library, that is $84,000 plus the $324,000 of the trailhead, we're at $408,000. And that would maximize using the DNR grant dollars. The option behind the library of the rail trail, again, that is $425,000 is what our estimate is and that is eligible for maximizing the DNR grant amount. Okay? So on the bottom of the screen here, we had the DNR grant, which was mentioned. It says 70/30 grant is what we had applied for. So they are providing $265,200. The city match for that in the grant application was $113,000. So the grant total is $378,200, okay? And so if we look up here, we see that the estimate for the red option was $408,000. And for the rail trail option behind the library is $425,000. So that's where we're sitting with dollars right now. The rotary, as mentioned, contributed $33,000, which is nice. And then Nat pulled out of this, we have our private donors that had offered to pay for a couple benches, the bike racks and the bike repair stand and pump. So that's where we are with funding.
And Connie, if I can just quickly jump in, you know, with respect to the funding options, as we've done with other placemaking projects, we are certainly looking for additional donations to come in and we also will be looking at utilizing other funds that we have that are funded primarily through our general fund, whether that's our development, our capital development fund that we have within our budget or other sources of funding that we have available on hand. Typically, we use one-time-use type dollars to help bridge the gaps when we have them. So, go ahead, Connie.
All right. Well, the remaining screens that I had were some photos just so that people are clear. This is the trail action on the shoulder. This is where the option would be in front of the library there for the separated trail. And then this is sitting at the intersection of South and Lake, looking at the old rail bed through here. So this is the area that I mentioned, we'd have to clear some shrubbery out of there and some trees that have grown over the years. And again, this is the path if you wanted, if you were standing behind the library and you were looking over towards the DNR, the ECO building. That's this area here around the power poles. And then this is a little clearer view behind the library where they've got the maintenance, you know, their shed back there and but that would be the path back in that area, just so everybody knows, kind of know what it looks like back there. And then this is the corner that, you know, everybody would be converging back in to enter into the trailhead. There's some really pretty aesthetic trees and some light poles there. So just to recap a few things for the trailhead, the amenities. The amenities in the park were reduced. And I mentioned that about the scoring and that's what our selection was based on to win this grant. The ADA picnic tables were a specific item used for scoring and winning the grant. The spaces available, as I mentioned, to add the picnic shelter and bike lockers later. And then we are rehabbing with mill and overlay in the part of the parking lot that we can instead of reconstructing that. The entrance to the trailhead, I know there has been some comments about why bring that over and not just cross them right at the driveway? So I wanted to touch on a few safety items there. The signature entrance of the trailhead, as I mentioned, would be in that northeast quadrant of Lake and Chapin Street. This is where we want to re-erect the clock tower and that would be a prominent part of rebranding the Cadillac Commons. Very visible for placemaking. The layout is really important of this. We want to provide direct, safe and separated routes to this type of a destination. And we want the users to feel safe when they're entering the trailhead. We want to, you know, there's all types of users of this, right? All ages, all abilities. But a designated separate entrance to separate them from the motorized users is really important to reduce those points of user conflict. And also to keep the entrance away from the railroad. That was an important thing when we did meet with the railroad, Great Lakes Central Railroad. You know, they don't even like people crossing the railroad. So they would really like this path to be removed from that. And they mentioned that multiple times in our meeting. So and then the points of interest in the park, you know, the drinking fountain, the maps, the tables, those are all in, pretty much on the west side of the park and then people can safely walk their bikes back to their vehicle to get them in their vehicles. So this is just a rendering utilizing, if you could picture this top roof being the clock tower with a small arch on the top, you know, that would say the trailhead at Cadillac Commons. And then everybody would go under this entrance to go into the trailhead park. So that is all that I have. Marcus, do you want to take it back over?
Sure, I think, you know, Connie, if you might be able to just unshare your screen for the moment, but be ready to share it again based on council discussion or questions that may come up that might be helpful to put a slide back up there. That would be awesome. And Mayor Philkins, I think it's appropriate now for you to take the floor back.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Connie, for the presentation and all of the updates. At this time, we'll open the floor for the council to have discussion. It's not a time for public interaction or public comment. We will have another public comment at the end of the meeting. So at this time, council members, if you would like to ask Connie any questions or provide any input for discussion, now would be a great time.
I'll go if you're ready, Connie. One of the things that I wanted to raise that actually was sent to me as a comment from Bruce, oh my gosh, Bruce Baker, was a question because of the concerns at the intersection of South and Lake Street, Connie. Is the trail comes in just past Cottage Street? There's a little cutoff and a curb cut already. Is it better for us to take bike traffic off the White Pine Trail at that point so that they're now on the east side of Lake Street to get to the corner of South and Lake and then just have them crossing once at that corner, no matter which path we pick? Is that something that's feasible and can be done at a reasonable risk? And then we're not merging both Harborview and bikes and cars together at the same point?
Yeah, I think I would like our traffic engineer to review that. And the initial concern that I have, I mean, yes, it's definitely doable, would be that cars that are heading Lake Street out of town, right, to head up towards Laurel, that they're accelerating. So I think I would want my traffic engineer to look at that to see that isn't something that we reviewed, but certainly could be looked at. Yeah, just to kind of, we did do some reviews and for safety, signing, pavement marking, you know, some things to the stop signs there because we did get a a letter from the manager there at Harborview. And so Kathy had listed a few details plus people on this meeting. And so Kathy had listed a few details plus people on this meeting. So we have been looking at that, but there are some safety enhancements that we can certainly do to that intersection.
Okay. And I don't know if we, whatever motion we do today, I'm in favor of taking some action. I'm assuming that could be added to our direction to you to see what the cost or the feasibility of that is.
Yeah.
My, my second questions slash comments go to, once we cross, because I like Dr. Smith and my wife, we're at those corners daily, walking and biking. And I, I really am concerned about those driveway crossings coming up to the library, the one right across from the condos, then the two at the library, then we have the corner. And, and therefore, to me, the most dangerous mix where people are going to be the most distracted are the sidewalk route, where we're mixing the pedestrians and the bikers. So my questions to you are going to direct towards option street and option behind the library. If we do the option street, you're, you've indicated to us, whatever direction we give you as far as the bidding process, we could then decide using, if it's a street option, that additional grant money to the trailhead at the time it comes back to council to vote on the project. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what our grant coordinator has told us, yes.
So it's not that we lose that money, it's that we would have to redirect it for the use of the project.
Yes.
Can you also explain how much that, that is? How much would we be able to reinvest back in the trailhead with the street option?
It would be the-
If I can read, just jump in very quickly, and I apologize, I know it's awkward online. So there's approximately $46,000 that's attributed to the in-the-roadway improvements regarding that path. What we would likely do, and Connie can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, is that if that's the path, or if that's the option the council chooses for us to bid on, what we would likely look at doing is simply adding back some of the amenities that we stripped out of the trailhead component, so that by adding those amenities back, it would essentially soak up that $46,000 that otherwise we'd be leaving on the table. Does that make sense?
And Marcus, that raises a question. I don't know if it's going to increase the cost, that would be the best, if we get to use that money on the trailhead without increasing the amenities, if we're getting quoted what we need, we're still covering the cost without adding amenities and therefore possibly increasing the cost, correct?
So the, so the grant itself is a 7030 grant. And I'm not, I'm not trying to complicate your question at all, I'm, I'm trying to answer it as simply as I can. It's a 7030 grant, so we would have to add enough additional cost back into the project for qualifying items if the option selected is the in-the-street pathway option, because that pathway option won't get covered by the grant. The grant will still cover all sorts of other things, other than approximately $46,000 worth. So if we want to still pick up that $46,000, we would just need to add in, and I don't have a calculator necessarily right in front of me, but add in enough additional project cost back into presumably the trailhead.
Why wouldn't we just apply that $46,000 to the trailhead costs that exist, which would reduce the city's obligation towards this?
I think it's because it's still a 7030 match. So whatever, whatever we spend, they'll only do the 70, and we will still have the same, is that what you were saying, Marcus?
Well, yes, and I was going to kick it back to Connie. You know, what, what we did was we, we tried to reduce as much scope as we can to reduce as much cost as we can. And the trailhead component of the project is where we were able to find the most savings by removing various, various amenity features that weren't going to be 100% required by the grant. And so all three options include that, if you will, sort of scaled back or scaled down version. We, we can certainly, you know, look at adding in some additional features so that we don't lose that, those dollars. And, you know, maybe there's a way that, that engineering can do it. So if that happens to be the option we bid on, maybe they're bid as, as alternates or something or as options so that we're not somehow, you know, locked into having to do them when we, when we get the bid back. Connie, does that make sense to you?
Robert had a question, too.
Yeah, I was just going to draw attention, like, so the available funding with the 7030 is 378, and if our trailhead is 370, is that like $8,000 that, you know, we only have to pay 30 cents on the dollar for? Is that the number where we'd want to increase our expenses about eight, eight grand? Or is it a bigger number than that, I guess, was still the question, which is related to the discussion we're having? That was my initial question still. What dollar, what, what dollar amount where, you know, if we don't spend that dollar, we're losing 70 cents on the dollar? Like, is that the eight grand I see right there? Or does that include the rotary money? Is that 15 grand? What is that?
Can I, can I just step in a minute? I, I can answer some of these questions. So is it, is it possible, Connie, for you to share your screen and go to the, just go to the page so that we're all looking at the same thing? It's page 24 in the packet. Yeah, that page right there.
That's what I was looking at, too.
Yep, so if you look at that top section in the green, we've been told that that $46,000 is not eligible pursuant to the grant. So you're talking 324,000 times 70%, which is 226,000. So you're, you're, you would be sacrificing, or, or you'd have to, you'd be losing about $40,000. So in order to maximize the grant, you'd have to spend about 380 just on the trailhead. Then you'd get the full grant amount, but then you'd also have to still spend the 46,000. So at the end of the day, the match for the city would still be very similar to what it is back on the rail portion.
So what if we-
Are you, are you following me on that?
I am.
Yeah. So what if we considered, you know, I really like the, the street option based on Dr. Smith's input, because it's kind of standardized with what other cities are doing with bike lanes. But I have a couple of questions about it. On the picture with the green, you've got it coming across South Street diagonally. Would it be possible to change the green map to go from back to the green, not the sign? There you go. Is it possible to take it east at that first, right there?
Yep.
So it's not, so it's causing them to slow down to get to the other side where they need to go rather than just cutting across diagonally?
Yes. Yeah, diagonal is a new thing that you're going to start seeing in cities for street. It's, it's not super common, but it is a new thing. So we put it on there just as a pictorial for people to see that. There, you are going to start seeing intersections where, since it is a four-way stop, then that user would also be able to get across the road diagonally. But it certainly can go straight across, and then, you know, we could have walk-your-bike signs, all of that can be done at that intersection.
Right. From a safety perspective, I think that we need to think about that. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think that would certainly slow things down where cars and pedestrians and bikes are going to meet on that four-way stop.
Well, there, I'm sorry, finish. Will there be a stop sign on the bike path as well there?
Yes.
Okay, well, in that case, I think that, you know, I've seen this diagonal thing before they, this is a Marquette, they have this, I believe. And if we turn right and then left, we're putting them in the pedestrian walkway. So the diagonal is one of the ways to remove the bike from where the pedestrians are going. And remember, everybody's taking turns anyway, so they would just, and that's really kind of what most bicyclists will do, instead of having to go stop, go stop. So I, I don't know what, what we think about that.
I, to, to build on what Councilmember Shipper just said, I think what, whatever motion we make, I would like to see the feasibility of just what Councilperson Shipper said on the diagonal versus the cross on the crossway and then to the east and then to the north, which I agree with Councilmember Shipper's, causes a double conflict with pedestrians. And then, Connie, my request would be to also look at that feasibility. I understand it's back a little bit, but we'd stop our bikers, cross them over just after Cottage Street, because then they're looking out for the pedestrians as they come into the stop sign. So if we could look at all three of those for when we come back to a final project decision, if that makes sense to everybody.
All right.
Why, I just, I, I was still about this cross thing. Connie, is, is this supposed to be better for the bikers, better for the walkers? Like, what, what's the thinking behind the diagonal? That people are doing? Both, but the bikers do it anyways, like you said?
Well, they, yes. Yeah, the bike leagues and the bike organizations, this is, this is what they prefer. So that's just the way it is, as an option.
I would agree, Robert, it's better for both people, the bikers, the diagonal, it looks unusual. I've never seen it before, but from a cyclist's point of view, it makes sense, walking two ways, taking up the sidewalk space for walkers, the diagonal is the way to go. Steve also has a very valid point. I would even prefer his idea of, of cutting over before then, avoiding this whole mess of a four-way stop there. But yeah, the diagonal is better for everybody. And I go through there a lot.
Well, and I, I don't disagree with that. I, I wasn't aware that there was going to be a stop sign there for the bikes before they go into that diagonal. So I would support that. I did have, I did have another thought. If we, it certainly would be nice, you know, if we cho- chose the bike lanes on Lake Street, it certainly would be nice to be able to address the culvert outlet to Lake Cadillac, the sewer maintenance, since it will be less expensive for us to be able to address it during this project. And, you know, we'd love to have a picnic shelter, but, you know, I understand we can do that later. But could you talk about if we chose to take care of that storm sewer maintenance in the project, how it will affect the grant dollars?
That would all be 100% city participation part of it. But the mobilization, you know, of the contractor getting to the site, and that would be, I mean, absorbed in the project. But the actual pull, so if everybody, anybody that was at the meeting before might remember this, but it's, it's across Lake Street, right as you're leaving the Lake Street parking lot, I don't know if you can see that on here, but there, it feels like there's a little speed bump as you're leaving to pull back out at the Chapin Street, Lake Street intersection. And it's not a speed bump, it's actually a culvert that has risen up, and it needs to be put back at the proper elevation. So that is the drainage culvert that this area of the city takes out to the lake. So our rain garden, where we're cleaning the water before we get it in there, that water will enter the lake through that pipe as well. So we have talked to Eagle representatives about that, and it is a maintenance activity, you know, so we have permission to do that. It just, we thought, Ken and I thought that would be good to do it right now while we're doing the rest of this work, so.
I'm going to ask a stupid question, Ken, which is normal for me. Is there any way, because it's connected to the rain garden that is part of the grant, that we could get it covered with some of the grant dollars because it's part of the overall rain garden drainage? Is that something the state would consider?
If we were under our grant dollars in that utilizing it, I would certainly ask them if I could, yes.
Okay.
And how much are we saving by doing it now as opposed to waiting a year and bidding out separately? Like, it's a $20,000 project, do you have like a, just even a small or rough estimate, I mean?
I would think with mobilization, everything, you'd probably be, I don't know, 25, 27,000, maybe?
Okay, so the 10%.
I have one last question, veering off from talking about money. I'm, I'm thinking maintenance and keeping the place clean, the waste and recycle receptacles, are we talking too big? Connie, are we talking too big of the dumpsters that waste management comes? Or what are we talking about there?
No, they're just, they're garbage cans that have a garbage side and a recycling side.
Okay. Who's going to be emptying those? Would it be City Crew or the Michigan Waste? Anybody know that, Ken Payne?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be us.
Maybe you guys, and that falls under your GS, too, a big guy keeping that place clean?
Yes, sir.
All righty, well, you'll do a good job. I think everybody wants it, but it's got to be kept up, but thank you. Just checking.
Is it, and I'll follow up on Councilmember Ellen Bass. Is it really $3,500 for two receptacles? Is that what we pay along the parkway or in the park, or?
Yeah, it seems a little high. Anybody?
Let me, those are the, weren't those the-
Page 11 of the program, the trailhead revision engineer's estimate.
Whoops, I am so going the wrong way, I'm sorry. Down arrow. Okay. Yeah, those are the bid prices that we got before from the contractor. So not to say that the next bid cycle, somebody might come in with a better price on that, but that's to acquire them, to then receive them, the shipping, and then the installation of them at the park, so.
Again, silly question, is that something that we have receptacles already in the city inventory that we could use?
These are part of our grant. So I could reduce it to one, but we do have to have one. We just thought it would be nice to have them at two locations in the, in the trailhead, so.
And Councilmember, Councilmember King and Mayor members of the council, Marcus, one of the, one of the complaints that we get from time to time is that we don't, we don't have enough receptacles in our, in our parks and, and common areas. And so while we can, you know, certainly relocate other receptacles, at least aside from one, as, as Connie mentioned, per the grant, we have to have at least one.
Oh, and I'm fine with that.
You're just taking away from other areas, that's all.
I'm fine with that, I'm just in shock of $1,750 for trash.
Yeah, everything, everything nowadays is very expensive. And-
We could fabricate some.
What's that?
You'd think we could fabricate some cheaper than that.
I, I just want to make sure if, that, you know, I'm listening to everyone's comments and feedback, and, and I want to make sure that Connie is also noting it. If, if this happens to be the option that we pick, I think it would be important that when the bid documents put together, Connie includes perhaps almost like an à la carte option for pulling the, the, the trail off at, I think you said Cottage Street, Councilmember King, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so pulling it off of Cottage, you know, I'm sure it'll add a little bit of cost just because it's some additional, additional painting, but I can't imagine it would be, it would be that much different, but just important, Connie, for you to-
Connie will be able to tell us. You know, just doing that little spot from the trail to Lake Street, could that possibly be included from the grant dollars also, where that curb cut already is, so doing the work we need? If that were the option we chose, would that be grant dollar eligible?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay. The, the only other question, the two questions I have left, and that's it, is I, I got two emails today on the clock tower and arch, of people concerned that that was put at the original site with all grant dollars and we've now paid to take it- put at the original site with all grant dollars and we've now paid to take it down, and does it really cost fifty thousand to put it up? And are there any other grants available that would put that back up rather than costing fifty thousand just to put that back up? So in other words, they feel like they're paying for the clock tower two or three times. Once to put it up at its original location, second time to take it down and store it, third time to put it back up.
I'll let, I'll let Connie or perhaps Owen clarify. I, I'm fairly certain that the Cadillac loft developer paid to have the clock tower taken down uh, and re- relocated at our public works facility where it's been sitting. Um, uh, you, the um, assumptions are correct that the, the tower itself was originally paid for through a, a grant that the city got. Uh, that grant though has been fulfilled and has been closed for many years. And, and there's no additional grant dollars that I'm aware of uh, that we paid to resurrect it. And I don't know, Owen or Connie, if you have any, anything to clarify on?
Yeah, I do wanna add, so the clock tower right now, so we have to have, per the grant, we have a, have a, we have to have a certain width of the path. So the clock tower right now has multiple posts under it and we need to modify the steel beam around it so that we only have four posts. So that is part of this. Um, so what it does is it gets rid of the, it gets rid of two of the spans of it so that we can have it wide enough to to go over the whole trail. And, you know, with the bike sofa path and have two feet safety on both sides, you know, somebody doesn't hit their handlebar on it. Um, so that is part of this modification of it. It is a specialty item. Um, my fifty thou is an estimate. I mean, I worked with a structural engineer to say, okay, what's it gonna take to put those steel beams in? These new arches. Um, what we have talked about is, you know, we, we would like the base to have a little bit of that stone bottom like we do at the other um, parts of the Cadillac Commons. Um, so if we're seeing it at sixty thou, maybe we could remove that. Um, if it comes in, then we could always add more items to, I mean, we wanna maximize the grant dollars, so.
And that, it, it also includes the fabrication and installation of an arch, which is, which is a new amenity.
Yes. And the footings, the footings of it, um, the wall.
Right, but ju- just to point out, I guess that it's not, you know, not all of that is just the moving and, and mounting. You know, there are some new things, the decorative and the arch uh, that is part of that cost.
Yeah, good point.
And, and I guess for clarification for the public, whatever option we choose, if we vote to choose one of these options, which I hope we do tonight, Connie, you'd be coming back with us, uh, to us with the bids and we would still have the options at that time to either approve certain expenditures from those bids or say, no, we don't want this expenditure on this bid.
Yeah, we do things as a line item, so yes, things, the only thing would be if the grant required specific.
Right.
Keep those in, but yes.
Okay.
If, if, just for the purposes, everyone of being, making sure we're all on the same page, um, the outcome that we're looking for tonight would be, you know, a selection of, of one of the options, you know, as discussed. And then we would, we would, you know, finalize the design, bid it, and then come back with all those results, which is Connie said would be, you know, the line items that, that council would then get to consider approving. Is, are we all on the same, just wanna make sure we're on the same page?
Yeah, I think after um, listening to everything here today, I'm a supporter of the street shoulder option. Um, I think I kinda changed my mind from where I was at the start of this meeting, but that is where I am today, so.
Would you like to entertain a motion?
I will. I will go ahead and make the motion to, I guess, signal our support um, to move forward with the option one or the street shoulder option.
Since Councilmember Shipper's, I will second that.
Can, can I, just so we're clear, can we add to that motion or should we add to that motion that Connie has the ability to look at those options at Cottage Street, whether she goes north and, or I'm sorry, east and then north, or diagonal uh, at that corner?
Yeah, I think that, um, definitely I'd like to include that in my motion, um, especially since we're doing the shoulder option, that's a, that's a possibility. So, and, and also, um, I guess one more thing, uh, but I think it'd be short sighted not to do the culvert at the same time. Um, it sounds like it needs to be done. It doesn't really sound like an option, whether we can pay for it with grant dollars or not, but I'd also like to signal my support for that concept, grant money or no, or, or, or not to get that culvert done, but.
Okay, and I will support the amended motion.
Can I be a pain in the rear end again?
Yep, absolutely.
I agree absolutely with uh, Councilmember uh, Ingles. And if it just helps in the direction for Connie, that Connie uh, talked to the state about trying to get those grant dollars. I agree, it makes sense to do this, whether or not the grant dollars can be applied, but I'd like to maybe get the ball rolling to see if we can make that a, a, a unit of the project, that, that the two rain gardens and the culvert are a part of it. If it, if it doesn't fly, I understand it doesn't fly, but if it does, I would love to see that happen.
I think that's a great I see, great idea, Steve.
Yeah, I would agree with that too.
I agree too.
Okay, we had a motion and support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shipper's?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. Good work, everybody.
Yeah, thanks all for all the work, Connie and Owen and Marcus and everybody who's been pulling this together. This has been so easy to understand and compare. I really appreciate not only your work on this, but the presentation of it. Good job.
All right, um, at this time, we will go ahead and open the fourth or our second public comment.
Anyone would like to, oh, go ahead, Carla.
I was just gonna ask Connie to unshare her screen so we could see everybody.
All right, uh, Lori King, I do see you have a hand raised. If you'd like to make a comment now, go right ahead.
She's next, no.
Oh, okay. Uh, Thomas Smith, I see you have a hand raised as well.
Yes, uh, the crossing of Lake Street uh, at Cottage Street is, is a curved road. People come down that pretty fast. It would be kind of a blind spot to cross. There used to be a marker for walking across there, but that was removed. Uh, maybe because it was a safety issue. So, and they wanted everybody to cross at the intersection of Lake Street and uh, South Street. So I'm not quite sure of the safety of crossing at that location or whether, you know, you'll, you'll involve the DOT in this eventually. But the uh, but, but other than that, everything looks good and it looks like you go, well done.
Thank you.
All right.
I see, Mark Wykoff, you have your hand raised?
Yes. Uh, I'm a resident on Holly Road, bicyclist almost daily in the summer uh, around the lake. Uh, I appreciate the conversation today and your support for the option to stay on the street. Uh, as the city engineer examines that intersection and that possibility of moving by cottage, I second the comments that Thomas Smith just made, uh, that moving back there is very likely to create another problem, especially with cars uh, accelerating, coming um, uh, off the stop sign there before you, you get to that. There's a couple of ways to possibly address that, that your traffic engineers can examine. I'm speaking now as a retired professional community planner. Uh, if the uh, green line that you use as the diagonal uh, going towards the trailhead uh, were repeated as a dashed green line uh, going south as you're uh, leaving and going away from, towards the trailhead, but you had the trailhead coming in near cottage, then that gives an indication of the indication that there are two different directions that those bicycles could be moving relative to the trailhead. That will help to cue the drivers to more action uh, taking place down there. I'm not sure that it'll be sufficient for the reasons that Thomas Smith indicated with the curved road and the acceleration that's likely to come after that. But the other major thing to consider is that you don't just have the bicycle traffic from the trailhead or uh, on the trail uh, going towards the trailhead. Uh, perhaps people who are not from the area uh, would be uh, increased in that area. But the most common uh, path that people take in bicycles around the lake brings them along Holly Road and not over that section of the trail. And so you actually get a tremendous amount of left turns by bicyclists uh, at the intersection of Holly Road and Lake. And um, that's different than the more or less straight through, which is now shown as a diagonal uh, across that intersection, uh, making it even more complex. As I watch the residents from the um, from the manor uh, going to the grocery store there, it seems to me uh, over the last twelve years or so that I've observed that, that the overwhelming majority pass uh, on the side closest to the manor uh, and take the right angle that way as opposed to the other way unless there is a traffic uh, reason or problem for going the other way. So putting the diagonal with the green line is great for the bicyclists and uh, assume we do the diagonal themselves, uh, that will help uh, separate those uh, uh, both of those different modes. The other problem with that is though that uh, it, it is not common in, in Michigan yet to see that. Um, Marquette's one of the few communities that's been experimenting with it. My understanding is it's working pretty well there, but it will take some education if you do that uh, to get both drivers and pedestrians and bicyclists to understand what that green painted path turns if you don't talk about repainting it on a regular basis.
Okay, Mr. Wykoff, your three minutes are up? If you could wrap up? Thank you.
I just did.
Appreciate it. Jerry Adams has his hand raised.
Thank you, uh, Jerry Adams. I live in the city. Uh, just a quick question. Um, um, and I appreciate what you're doing. In terms of the alternative that you're going to seek bids on, if I understand it correctly, there's about forty-five thousand dollars uh, that will not be grant eligible. Will the, the bid package, will it include other options to take advantage of that forty-five or forty-six thousand dollars?
Jerry, we don't, we don't um, get into discussion during public comment?
Okay, I'd like it to include, okay, I'd like it to include uh, other possible options and then you can do with it as you wish uh, down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see, Paul has his hand raised. Can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Uh, Paul Griffith, I'm uh, Vice Chair of the Friends of the White Pine Trail. Um, and uh, appreciate the action that you took tonight and glad to see it was even unanimous. Um, and would encourage you to continue to press forward hard. Um, and hopefully uh, get it done this year or at least a good section of it. I belong to a biking group called Silver Spokes and we're up at Cadillac several times during the year and every time we meet, Paul, what's the status of that new trailhead? And uh, I think I'll have good news uh, to share with them, so. Um, good uh, good job tonight and continue to press forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Um, Mark? Lagerwee, Lagerway? I apologize if I'm pronouncing it wrong.
Good enough, thank you. Uh, I just wanna echo what Paul just said. Congratulations. Thank you for having a unanimous vote and for a very good conversation about safety. Uh, and I, you know, I think all pathways we could have chosen could have been done safely, but I certainly understand those concerns, particularly at the intersection of Lake there in Cottage. Um, uh, and, but I, I, I also would like to endorse what Jerry Adams said. I think uh, we don't wanna leave money on the table if at all possible. If that means bringing the picnic shelter back into the trailhead, that's a great idea. Uh, let's, let's use the entire grant and uh, thank you for finally spending Rotary's money. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Ruth Ann, if you'd like to make a comment, I see your hands raised as well.
And I appreciate the vote uh, that you've come to as the, a good consensus, good discussion and a good consensus vote. I, uh, it, it was my preference for your uh, plan choices. Um, and, and as well as Shannon and Karen, so we appreciate the um, fruitful discussion. Um, also, if there's any way, I know grant, I know grant dollars, you can't necessarily reserve money for maintenance, but I just wanna iterate the importance of annual painting of all of these, um, uh, you know, um, uh, guidance paintings, whether it's through the diagonal intersection or wherever, it, it has to be maintained. Um, and also, we didn't talk much about signage, but I would hope that there's lots of signage included in the grant that's gonna direct people where they need to go.
If they need more money for signage, use it.
Well, I mean, there's, I'm sure signage is built into the um, grant somehow. We didn't talk about it, but I just wanna make sure that that's a part of your uh, grant request. So anyway, good job, everybody. Thanks. Uh, appreciate your hard work uh, on this project.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Did you, oh, okay, I didn't know if somebody else there wanted to make a comment as well. Um, if anyone else would like to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand now. Um, if you're appearing by phone, it's star nine in order to signal a hand raise. Kay, uh, Kay Smith, did, I just saw your hand raised briefly. Did you wanna make a comment?
Sorry, I must've touched something. I didn't, I didn't mean to.
No problem.
Good job. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay. Not seeing any indications in the chat either that anyone would like to make a comment and I'm not seeing any additional hands raised either.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Um, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. And I wanna say thank you to um, the public that joined us this evening um, to support the project and to help us come to the best decision that we think um, is gonna keep people safe and also move the project forward. And um, great job, council, good discussion. Um, I appreciate all of you. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.